Right, so if we could do the roll call, that'd be great.
Member Hawkins.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Folito.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Widmer.
Yep.
And Mayor Boe.
I'm here.
Is there any public comment?
My name is Jim Mann, and I'm going to drive it. I don't know how many of you had the opportunity Friday to come by here and see the Halloween decorations. There is this department that put up, and the people come in to the event. These are characters and gossips that did just like a lot of really.
Yeah, Jim Mann.
Oh, they can't hear me? Can I start over? Okay, I don't know how many of you had the opportunity last Friday to come by here and see the plaza completely done for Halloween. The police department put up great decorations. Members of the community turned out with kids, parents dressed in costumes. I just thought it was a really good event. And then following early this week, the chief had a coffee with a cop here in the council chambers, which I just asked him tonight. I came, of course, and then it was well attended and a great event. So the thrust of what I want to say is there seems to be a change in this town for some of these community events that have been very successful, like the library opening was huge, very well done. The National Day at Helen Holbrook Palmer Park. And then we have a 15-foot Christmas tree that Robert and Steve were putting together yesterday or when I was here for the coffee. So I just want to say that I think these events are great for the community and something we have needed for a long time and sort of just went by the boards. And I'm really glad to see that it's back and I encourage if there are more people here to attend these community events. So thank you all. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Council.
It's kind of a compliment, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. You know, that kind of a comment is really important for us and the staff to hear because people go to a lot of work and it, you know, it sort of isn't water off a duck's back. It really deserves comments, so thank you.
Thank you. As you guys all know.
It helps us.
Good. I'm glad it does. You guys all know me. I'm not hesitant to shoot my big mouth off. Thank you.
We're aware of that. Public comment. You need to speak up. You need to identify yourself and your residence and.
Thank you. My name is Tom Georgie with Stephanie Sargent. We're not Atherton residents. Stephanie's family home of 60 years is at 425 East Oakwood Boulevard in Redwood City, which is on the border of Atherton and Redwood City and the Oakwood neighborhood of Redwood City in Atherton. I read the 16-page results of the HCD review and I'm really glad I don't have George's job. It's a a lot of detail that they're asking for. And they only consider 1980s per year realistic number. So we expect the town will be discussing alternate ways to get to 348. Our interest is in the town's ongoing discussion. Good neighbors, we want our voices heard regarding zoning overlays. I've heard it said, push it to the periphery several times. And the last time I spoke to you all, it was emotional for me because of those words. It just push it to the periphery because I don't feel like Atherton is a town who wants to push their problems off to their neighbor. But because of the singularly and disproportionately large number of units previously suggested to be allowed at 23 Oakwood Boulevard, that is a problem for us. This is a photo. This is a photo of Stephanie's backyard. I don't know if you can see it. And this is what possibly could be. No, there are slightly different variations. Now, as you can see, a total loss of privacy. Now, I don't know what it would actually look like because Mr. Arata has not shared his plans with us or either of any of the other five surrounding neighbors. And I understand that he shared with the council that he had and that we were all amenable with those plans, which he has not shared them and we are not amenable with those plans. I've heard it said in this chamber that he gave you the number of units he needed, 26, and it was from that where 16 units per acre was arbitrarily selected. So I offer that any reconsideration for a zoning overlay of the property at 23 Oakwood throw out all previous assumptions of what is right there. As a process for reaching that original basis, kind of feels like dirty pool. And also in the HDC comments under Part B Housing Needs Resources and Constraints Point 4, HCD basically stating that any list of available sites must list the designated income level. So HCD is looking for low-income units. And it's my understanding that Mr. Arata has said, besides that he needs 26 units for this to pencil, that he's also said that he's not going to do any low-income units. So I suggest that these units, while they may be low-hanging fruit, are empty calories. Um. I don't understand. I don't. I don't pretend to understand the difficulty of what you guys are really up against here, but might suggest that any zoning overlays be equal in their allowable unit capacity. Or perhaps the town should be open to allowing any property in the town to apply for a tasteful fourplex, subject to a thoughtful program of design review that keeps a thoughtful, considerate, current Atherton municipal codes. For instance, minimum side yards, which in the case of 23 Oakwood would be 38 feet, something like that, instead of loading 26 units onto the periphery and dumping your problem in your neighbor's lap. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? If there's public comment from anyone online, you can click the reactions button on the bottom of your screen and raise your hand. I don't see any other public comment. So let's go on to the first item in the study session, which is to provide feedback and direction regarding the design for the Atherton Station remodel project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, while staff prepares their PowerPoint and such, I'll do a brief introduction. There were some questions on this item that I fielded during one-on-one related to the HVA system costs, cost differential between HVA systems, alternatives, and other options, paint color selections of the overall project cost. The design team produced several HVAC options as an attachments, which staff will go over. The larger commercial system is what is specified in the alternative estimate. The design team can address any cost differential and performance difference between the HVAC. Excuse me, just lost my notes. HVAC alternatives proposed in the attachment. The paint colors are shown to match the train station to the town center facilities. The trim and the under eve colors are historically based, but the pink color for the main body of the station is a match to the town center. The funding agreement with Caltrain provided $400,000 toward the cost of this project. The design costs are approximately $94,000. The construction cost estimate for this project is about $306,000 and the alternates are an additional $68,000. The three total about $469,000. This includes a 16, a number of contingencies that are in there, 16% for construction, 15% design, 7% cost escalation, and the 12% contractors' bonds and insurance. The actual cost of the project will be determined by the construction market at the time of bid, of course, but any costs that exceed $400,000 would be paid by the town. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to staff and Garavalia Architecture to provide the staff presentation.
Thank you, George. Members of the council, I do want to thank the council subcommittee that helped get us this far. And I want to introduce Mike Garavalia, who is the lead on the design team for the project. And so included in your staff report and the attachments are a variety of items to provide some feedback on. And so we're going to walk you through those in in the presentation. And so Anthony, if you wouldn't mind, I think we're going to start. You know, the items that we're going to cover relate to the exterior layout and elevations, the interior layout, the color selection, the HVAC selection, as well as the exterior display board that would replace what we have out there now. And so if you go on to the next slide, Anthony. So one of the first items that we needed to consider is related to accessibility. And so two aspects of that, one is accessible parking and the lead into the structure as well as connectivity to the town center. And so we have a couple of parking spaces there close to the parking, to the structure that'll be regraded with an accessible pathway. And it was determined that the easiest ingress and egress to the structure from an accessibility standpoint would be from the rear of the structure on the track side. And so we'll get into it later. This is the fully accessible entry. We do have access doors on both sides of the structure. And so we can go to the next slide where we're going to be able to walk through some of these elevations. And so here, this is the western elevation facing Town Hall, where the center panel gets removed and we put in some double doors. So we have that. Correct me if I'm wrong. Those are actuated, correct?
They're actuated. That's one of the options.
One of the options. Okay.
Having both.
Okay. And then so next slide, please, Anthony. One more. Did we miss the east elevation? Okay, I'm going to apologize. In the PowerPoint, I might have messed up and put the west elevation twice. The east elevation is similar to the west elevation. It's actually should be in the attachments to the to the staff report. Go back a slide, Anthony. Sorry. Whereas we don't have the wood knockouts on the bottom as we do on the west side. But in essence, the glass comes down with glass panels down to the bottom. And I can have Mike elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wait.
No, that's not the issue. So I say that the accessible path from the parking is the easiest to the rear. Okay, and so that would have an actuated door with a push button, kick bar to open the double doors. One of the alternates that we have for feedback from the council is whether or not we're going to put that same type of actuator on the other side as well. And so grade-wise, yes, you'll be able to come out and feed through. Yeah, we can go on the interior layout and that'll explain that a bit. Certainly. Yeah, no, we'll elaborate that as we get to the interior and the layout.
But to make it clear, from this elevation, the wet looking toward the town center, most of those panels are currently open. They are not filled in now.
Though, this side is closed.
No, when you're when you're looking toward the town center, you're looking from the train tracks toward the town center, it's open.
That's the east side.
On the east side.
I don't know if you call it the east or the west. Which side do you call it?
The tracks. Let's call it the track side. This is the town center side.
Okay.
And then so unfortunately, I messed up on the presentation. On the track side,
Right.
we will be closing up the open panels in a similar style to the existing, but for various reasons related to historic preservation and whatnot that Mike can elaborate. The wood panel trimming on the bottom that exists on this side will not be replicated on the track side. Okay, so.
And the goal for working with the historic resources is that contemporary changes are differentiated, yet compatible with the historic structure. So there's a slight variation in the appearance so that you can tell what's original, what's historic, and what are the new changes. So.
So from the original discussion on this, I understood, maybe I was wrong. Wouldn't be the first time. But I thought that we were only going to have the doors open on the civic center side, which would be the west side, and we were going to close that and and put the wood panels on the track side to cut down on the noise. And there would only be one entrance in and out because, you know, people didn't want to have people walking next to the track. And so now it looks like there's doors on both sides and you're having the bottom part of the the section open towards the track side, which actually doesn't make any sense to me from a noise standpoint. Trains are still going to go by. They may not be honking their horn, but they're still going to be going by and blowing dust in there. And there's going to be auto visual aid equipment and things like that in there. Could be a problem.
The room will, the building will be sealed. Everything's going to go down to the ground. There will no longer be that gap along the base.
Like they said, on one side, it was going to be open.
No, what we're saying is that rather than having the panelized look that we have on this side of the building, which is more of the historic, the wall, the panels on the track side will actually have glass coming down lower and it just won't have those knockouts.
Got it.
And so as far as being a sealed building is concerned, it's going to be a sealed building.
Okay, but then the doors on both sides, was there justification on that?
Well, the path of least resistance for disabled access is the track side. It's the least amount of change to the existing concrete area to help control costs. So.
So sure, that's the smartest thing, you know, but okay, it's fine.
I thought that in the review, I thought that the, there was also a requirement for two exits.
The occupant load isn't margin of to require two exits and they're not separated by the diagonal distances. I think it's predominantly about disabled access and I'm sorry. Yeah, mostly about disabled access. There was also a one of the committee members had liked the appearance of the traditional. An earlier version of the of the train station did in fact have all glassed in with double doors and felt that that was an aesthetic, you know, a plus. So it is a train museum and the idea of walking out as you normally would, leaving a train station towards track side is, you know, is the train passenger experience. And I'm thinking of how children might might experience the facility.
Clarify, we're not required to have doors on both sides.
No.
Okay, you have a question?
It'd be my preference to not have doors on both sides because I thought in the beginning we were going to close off the train side completely because of safety issues for little children running around and going and then there's no barrier to the track.
There's a fence.
Yeah, they put a fence up. They put a fence up.
It's been fenced off.
But still, it's.
Okay.
But it's obviously more costly to put in a door than to just have it.
Yeah, exactly. It's a comparable, you know, I wouldn't consider it a big differential on price. I'm more concerned about the the flatwork and the concrete slab areas that need to be disrupted.
I actually thought added some symmetry to the building as a whole and the access through the interior seemed to flow. My question about that was, was it because of the access from both sides? It did seem like it interrupted the long center train exhibit because you have to.
There's also issues about, there's a disruption and they're also dealing with turning radiuses and clearances that are required at doors. So the, we're talking about really tight clearances within the structure. It's obviously not a very large building. And the display units were being maximized as far as.
So it'd be easier for your clearances if you only had one set of doors.
Actually, it's actually a little easier because the width of the display case or the depth of it, however you want to call it, it's disrupted to provide that turn radius for the wheelchair on at the door and even on this side. And so what you'll notice is we go to the next line, Anthony, or two slides, I'm sorry, on the interior layout. We did discuss the option of extending the casing, the casework all the way across. And what you'll notice in this, one more, sorry. What you'll notice is that the dashed lines there would basically be the limit of what that case could be to accommodate that wheelchair turn. And so having it open actually helps with that. Well, at least on that door side, you have to have it. And so you want that casework to be symmetrical, we would think. And so it may look a little strange having that centerpiece different than the rest of it.
The other issue that we were contemplating in the functionality space and circulating is that when you, once you introduce a continuous display through the entire interior, you have to walk all the way around to get back out. So it's a little, it provides a little more flexibility for movement and, you know, people interact with the space.
Yeah, I'll add, I was going to say that the interruption by not having the continuous display case, I don't think has an adverse impact on the display. It definitely takes out some space that you could use. So if you were going to put, you know, six different periods in there, maybe you'd only be able to put five in. But so there's an impact, but I don't think that it will necessarily interrupt the flow of the display. I do think there's value to being able to not have to go around the entire display.
We're still getting comments from people on Zoom. They can't hear. If you could make sure your mics are on and bring them a little closer.
I would just add, I wanted to add about one entrance and one direction to go and you have the crowd control going around and.
They do that. Oh, there we go. Somebody turned on my mic. Oh. Some exhibits, they force you to go in one circular route so that you are sure to see the entire exhibit instead of having somebody come in this door and that door and going in all different directions. It's a very small space, as you realize, Mayor, because you've been designing it. But I can.
I'm not sure. Crowd control is going to be a big issue.
Crowd control is not, but to see the entire exhibit, you might want to go one way anyway.
I think there's a raised hand from Diane, from the council member.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have a quick question. When we were talking about this before, I was under the impression that we needed to have the two entrances and the break in the display to allow handicaps. Am I clear in that you're now saying that we could do one continuous one without the break in the case and shut one of the two doors?
At the most concise, yes. I don't really recommend it because I there's a lot of, it's a small space, a small, some simple design in some regards, but there's a lot of complexities that we ran into. So I'm trying to think if we unwind this, exactly what the potential implications are. Ambrose Wong, my project manager is on the line and he might, he might have something to say about that. My belief is that you could back all this out and and simplify it in that fashion. There's Ambrose there. And I don't think we'd have any code requirements that are that are being crossed.
Because that really changes the design if you didn't need to do that. Because right now, we spent a lot of time trying to deal with the historic benches and built them into the displays. If we didn't have that interruption, we could probably leave those free standing. I don't have it to scale here, but just looking at the screen here, there's a bench on either side. If we continued the display in the middle, we may not have to overlap with the benches.
I think there's a space constraint with regards to the benches that we laid out before, particularly with regards to the accessibility going around. And so there the benches were integrated to try and maximize both the display space as well as being able to utilize those benches for seating.
Right, but if you if you were hypothetically to not break the middle like we designed in, if that wasn't required, we could make a continuous case and just have it end and then you can have the benches free standing. Is that correct?
I don't think that you'd have enough room around the bench to actually use it.
Also, the bench, the bench has seating on two sides. And if you incorporate it into the display, then you don't have this side open, which wouldn't be useful. If you see what we're talking about in the image here.
You can go to the next slide, Anthony.
There's, there's a bench at the very end of the display. Those are historic benches that have been part of this train station for, if you believe the dates that we have in the Heritage Association, they've been a part of it for more than 100 years. And I think there, I think it's there, it was a good job the way it was incorporated into the display. You lose the other side of the bench. That's right.
What can I add? One more element to the to the interior layout. At one end of the space was a basically seating area for potential video. So at the, on the left, the right, the right image on the right side, you see the bench. It's facing a screen and was intended for to, you know, potentially for a video to be running for people to sit and watch that. So if if we only have one way to circulate to the building, you're kind of stepping in front of the folks that might be watching a video. So again, these are, these are elements we thought about at the design and to consider.
But just going back to Diana's point, that if in fact the display were continuous rather than broken as it's currently proposed, it would obviously give more room for display. And I think the question would be, well, how challenging would that be for a wheelchair to get around that display if if a wheelchair didn't have that opening in the middle?
There, a wheelchair, a wheelchair can circulate through the space as it is a ring, you know, so. You're just, you just have the one option to go forward, so to speak. That's hard to.
Would you still have to have a divot out of that center thing on one side where the doors are going to accommodate?
Yeah, you have to have a minimum clear, free and clear area in front of the both sides of the door. So that's a code requirement.
You need to explain that a little bit more. And then I have a question. Was there any consideration about using those large benches? Because they're very large, somewhere on the exterior, like in the front, where it's. Because they're very large, somewhere on the exterior, like in the front, uh, where it's in, where you would enter because that could be used as outside seating and then you'd have much more room inside for display.
Can they be outside?
Yes.
Well, they're made out of wood, but I, I mean, you could have them outside, but again, they're double sided.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't put them up against the building. They'd have to be in an area that
Of course.
You'd have to be able to circulate around.
Yeah, you just have to think about designing it.
Well, I thought because they were historic, they couldn't be out in the, exposing the elements. Am I wrong on that?
It's not because they're historic, it's because it's just doesn't, it's not the kind of thing that's going to weather well. So it's not, you know, I, I, again, wouldn't recommend it. They, they're painted. Yeah.
Marine varnish.
Not, that, if you, if you own a wooden boat.
And then just to clarify, I think, uh, Councilmember Lewis, um, what we're talking about with regards to that centerpiece, if it were to go in, you'd have to at least notch that area inward toward, away from the door so that there's enough room for a wheelchair to make its turns after it comes into the building or to go out, um, which would impact what that casework looks like. It would look in, I'm going to say, it would look different in that centerpiece.
But if you close the other side, sorry, I wanted to raise my hand. If you close the other side, as two of the council members proposed, and you only had one entrance, and I know this at the front, the entrance closer to City Hall, we're going to have to deal with more access on the outside, handicap access. And I know the other one's better, but we can't enter off the back. So if we enter in the front, if we put the case a, a, a little bit farther toward the back, but still allow enough room for going straight, you only need the turning radius by the door, correct? So instead of notching it, could you just make a continuous uh, display but have it closer to the back wall? So that you just are going straight along the back wall.
Like, so it wouldn't be centered in the building?
No, the, the case would be centered in the building, but it would be, oh, yes, you're right. It would be closer to the back wall by whatever he said he needed to notch it. So if he had to notch it six inches, the, the display would be, uh, six inches closer to the back wall to allow clearance for people in the front. And but it
Are you really only talking six inches?
I don't know, I made that up. We said notch it. Nobody gave us a amount.
Yes, and, and it matters for a building inspection. It will fail if it does, doesn't meet those dimensions.
How much is it? Is it, how mu- how much is it notched or how much is that clearance radius?
I believe it is about six inches.
Okay. So it sounds like we can do one and make it closer to the back wall if we didn't have a second door. And then we deal with the access off the front, beef up the access design off the front. Or we do it this way and keep it with, uh, you know, if you're going to open it, it almost makes sense to have the two doors. So you could go out, there are outside displays as well. So the flow of going through it to the outside displays does make sense. But two of the members did not like the back doors. So those are the two choices I see.
I think once they figured out that there was a fence, nobody was against the back door.
Yeah, there's a lot of room between the building and the train track and there's a fence there.
Okay, so we're okay with the double doors and?
Since there's a fence protecting the little children from the train.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I assume that there would be cost difference, but.
It, it, it won't be much because it's going to be offset with doing the glass paneling and additional flat work.
Sorry.
We couldn't hear that.
Yeah, I know, but we said do a design to cost and obviously this is, they designed it to cost the whole, the design that cost the construction of the whole thing was the four hundred K from the railroad company. From the Caltrain.
Yeah.
This way. So I'd like to know at the end, what's, what's the estimated total cost for all this? With the audio visual and the, uh, you know, and the displays. And I realize you could get maybe a railroad modeling group to come do some of it for free. But, you know, there's going to be the interior stuff that you have to figure out. So I'd like to know that at the very end, but I'll be quiet until then.
All right, so next item for discussion is related to the color scheme. Um, and there are a variety of choices. One is to try and match uh, the town center colors, um, with a nod to some of the historic, um, features or go more on that historic realm. And so what we have for you in the next, um, next slide are the, the colors. There's an exhibit or a picture that shows, uh, the historic paint layers. So we peeled off a, a piece of, uh, the paint from the structure and, uh, let's see here, we'll go there. And you can see the, the various layers that range from, um, call it more of a beige color to, we have a green layer, there's, uh, S and P yellow. So there's a variety of colors that the building has been painted over the course of time. Um, and so one option that we have here is a color scheme with a base coat of the exterior. The exterior being a color similar to what this building is with the brown trim as a primary, with, uh, the green color that historic knot is an accent. Other options are to go with kind of the current color scheme where it's that beige color with the maroon trim. Or, you know, at the pleasure of the council, I'll have Mike elaborate. They actually took a, you know, used a microscope to kind of identify the different colors of, of paint that we have on that structure.
So, um, the, the historic colors are Southern Pacific, because, um, brand colors, so to speak, um, are, were, um, kind of an ochre, yellow range color for walls and, and brown trim. That's a typical classic. And this building at one point in Dally had those colors on it. You can see in a recent, uh, the paint colors go from the, the sort of the brown lower part up to the top, current color. It had, or it had the, um, yellow on it for a relatively recently, so.
And then the avocado green was what, in the seventies?
Uh, no, that actually was one of the, um, I've seen other train stations painted that color. It's, it's sort of a, what we call iris green.
Iris?
Iris or.
Is this image matching the current town center?
Yes, that's using the, um, it's called.
Well, that's, I'm going to say that it's, it's colorized. That's not this building's color, but it's labeled as the color of this building. It's that base color that's up on the screen.
Think of it as color coding on the.
The one that's listed as base color, the top square.
That's peach.
That's in this?
That's the color.
Where's that color?
Building.
That's the body color. That's your color here. So you think of it as color coding, trying to get colors to match exactly. Through electronic and print media just doesn't happen. So just think of color coding. The, the body color is presented as the same color as what's, this building is painted. And then the trim colors is a dark brown referencing the dark, the dark colors around, um, doors and windows here. There's a lighter, um, wood, uh, color, I believe on the, some of the eaves. We were using the brown color there with potentially a, um, one of the, the, uh, the green, sort, sort of a sage green as a, as a trim color if you felt that was beneficial. It's on the underside on the sopits.
Yeah, there's a.
Screen, yeah, on that screen. The base color looks like this building on that screen.
Yeah, if you look at the, this note right here, it labels it as the, uh, roof overhang. Being that green color.
Yeah, I agree.
The base color on this looks yellowish.
The reason for that is we can't replicate the, the paint color on this building through the print media or digital media. There's no way to do it. You never pick paint colors off a screen, any. It's going to match. There's, uh, in the, in the construction process.
Match.
Yes. Yes, those are the. Exactly, exactly.
So, I was going to say, well, uh, do you want it to match the town hall or do you want it to not be as matched?
Yeah, so the picture that you have in here, which if you go back one chart, back one chart, please.
This one.
No, that's going forward to the alternates.
He's getting it.
Yeah, this thing here, okay? I think that's very attractive and it's similar to what's there today. Personally, I think that that's, that's good. I don't mean it has to match the buildings. I mean, our buildings don't match as, as it is. Much to some people's dismay, but I think that we have a very attractive building. But at the same time, that location out there is, is already been, already been a different color. And I, we're going to make it historical and try and keep the historic value that I think we should keep it as close to what's this.
Go ahead, Diana.
Yeah, I have two questions. When, when you're introduced the third jade green, you're not going to see it straight on. Is there any way to incorporate it into any of the other accessories? So, uh, like you have the, on the bottom, you have those little tiny, uh, molding features. So it, the only way you're going to see it is if you're walking through the door and you look up. Is that correct?
Yes, we're, just to, uh, you know, share our, our thinking, uh, we're, we felt that, uh, a judicious use or very limited use of a third color would probably be more desirable. That was an assumption we made to get the discussion going. If you wanted to introduce, um, another trim color and, and use it a little bit more freely, uh, then definitely we can do color placement and, and consider that.
Just to, to review, one of the things we talked about before when we were, were meeting on this, if you go with the historic route, the building is being renovated, correct me if I'm wrong, to the nineteen fifties. In the nineteen fifties, I believe it was yellow and we found a lot of letters of people disliking the color yellow on this and it was changed. So if we're not going to go with the historic color, my favorite era aesthetically is of the nineteen thirties in which it had, uh, there were only black and white pictures, but they looked very similar to what would be a white and brown like what we have here. I don't know exactly because they're black and white pictures, but that to me is aesthetically the nicest time. So if we're not going to do it to the nineteen fifties, if we're not going to be sticklers about making it historically matched to the, the era that we're renovating it to, then I would propose that we match it to look like it's part of the compound. So I favor the colors matching the ones that are on the current building. Do we have brown trim or what's the color of trim on the current, uh, the, the city hall?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I think we're, I think we're going to second your motion, Diana. I agree with you.
Yeah, nineteen thirties.
But what's the color of the trim on this, the city hall right now?
Brown, brown. It's, it's actually kind of bronze, isn't it? It's kind of a brown bronze.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it will look like it matches. So I think this color template, although right here it looks very orangey on this thing, this is not true to life. But this should, this will match, it'll look like it's part of a compound, like it's intended to go with our other building. And I think that's the way to go unless we wanted to go against everyone's aesthetic and make it yellow and be a, you know, official. But I prefer this.
I just don't want a green.
The green is only underneath. You're seeing it when you look up.
Well, we don't need to have, we don't need to have the green trim if you don't want it. We just have it the base color.
We can always add it if we don't like it.
Okay, so no green at this point, just, uh, the two colors. Okay.
I think this subcommittee has done an excellent job on this. Do we have more to do?
There's the. We are getting close. So, um, now this is kind of one of the pricier things to figure out, um, and it's related to the air conditioning. Um, as you know, the building is a long space. And so being able to either heat or cool is not, not the easiest thing. And it almost needs to be balanced on the two sides of the building. And so there were a variety of options. The initial option that was suggested is, um, the mini split heat pump, um, which would have, uh, a condenser and it was going to be, the louver was going to be top mounted on the north and south sides of the building and that would require condensing units in essence on the roof. Um, and so the committee had a concern about the aesthetics of having those condensing units on the roof. And we were asked to look at additional options. Uh, so we have a couple of other options that can be done. Um, they do require, uh, penetrations of different sorts in the building. One is kind of a portable unit that you can kind of wheel around a little bit. It'll have a, um, almost like your dryer vent hose that would basically mount out towards, uh, maybe a window panel would be replaced with something for it to switch out air. And, uh, another option is some sort of, uh, in-wall heat pump. Um, I was going to say, none of these options are ideal. Um, but there needs to be some consideration that there are going to be some sort of historic displays. There's going to be electronic equipment in the building. And so though you may not want to, you know, you're not going to occupy the building regularly per se, but there's going to be some need for some temperature moderation of some form. Um, and so this is where we're asking for some feedback.
So if, if in fact, the bottom part of one of the sides is just going to be glass, that would be the optimal place to have, say, a vent go out as opposed to in the middle of a wall, which I would, I would not want to see. Depending on which device we get, but, you know, I personally, I don't have an opinion. Um, I do believe that there needs to be some, uh, conditioned space in there, so I'm okay with that. But, uh, you don't want to have some large pillar thing that's going to be unsightly and it's just not going to fit, you know? So, but if you're going to have to have some sort of venting through the wall, make it through the bottom part of the glass as best you can. But I realize that there's a weather issue. It's raining and stuff like that, but, but, uh, you're having a, cutting a hole, doing all this renovation and then cutting a hole and the, and the historic wall doesn't make sense to me. That's it.
I'm confused. This mini split heat pump, what's that got to do with the roof? You can, you can.
The condensing unit.
Yeah, but it can be mounted on a pad.
It could be, but then you have to figure out where around the building you want it. And so being that it is a building that we want people to walk around and enjoy, it's the aesthetics of having that unit right out.
Well, the aesthetics of having anything on the roof are pathetic.
I'll agree. The aesthetics of all of it is tough.
In fact, the alternatives are all pathetic. Many split with, with a pad, I think, uh, how far away can you put it?
I was, um, contemplating that. I think that the, the further away it gets, the, the more problematic. That you would need to put it, um, my thinking is towards the, uh, street, Fair Oaks. Move it into that landscape area, kind of where that Caltrain station sign is right now.
That's probably too far away.
That's probably the best place for it aesthetically. Uh, the, the other locations where those signs are the, uh, the, um, display panels that are there currently.
What's the distance from the, from the, uh, uh, east side to the fence?
To the.
Approximately.
Fence, uh, it's about, uh, a little, a li- little less than twenty feet, I think, twenty to twenty, it's twenty.
So you could put a pad up against the fence and still have plenty of room to walk around the building.
And then we just screen it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even if you didn't screen it, I, I, I don't think it'd be a big deal, but then we got to buy some more bushes. Bill, Bill doesn't want us to buy a lot of bushes because we're going to be over budget.
We already are.
Well, uh, let me give you, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent convinced we need, uh, heating and cooling in there. I, I, it's hard to judge the, the trees are going to block the sun. So it's going to protect the heating because the trees face are on the west side of the building. But if we need it, I think the best solution is the in-wall, uh, package, which, the heat pump package, which I think is. package, which the heat pump package, which I think is also the cheaper one. And I agree with what Bill said that to put it at the bottom of one of the panels is the right place to put it.
Get through the mayor? This is a very small room and it it can, we could use and we also have this big long display where we have a case. So we could build a heat unit and an AC unit, just the commercial ones that you buy at Target inside that case. And so you're not, you're not doing anything around the walls on the outside. You're not having pipes hanging out. This is like the equivalent of a very large bedroom, which you could heat with a space heater. They're getting so much better now. So that was one of the options we talked about. It's just using an in-home unit, so you're not running ducts or any of that. And it can be built in with just the opening, like the vent thing coming out discreetly through the wall of the cabinet. So you're not even seeing a big unit anywhere. So that was one of the things I thought we were going to explore is building it in and having it be something that's not big and not big an industrial thing because it's only one bedroom.
So a follow-up question for Councilwoman Hawkins' memorandum. Would that also provide some air conditioning or do you think that we don't need?
That's why we were looking at the heat pump. But they have commercial, just over the counter, not industrial, unless we have some sort of official requirement that we have to use an industrial grade system, but it's a small room. And like Rick said, we don't, we just need to take the superheat off. It doesn't have to be, you know, really toasty or a really super cold, just enough because it is all glass and there is not enough shade. I think it will get hot and it will get cold. So we need to have something, but I think that just those simple ones would work and we could build them in so you won't even see it. And then we could build a cabinet so it could be open to be serviced if we needed to. Is that, is there any reason why we couldn't use something like that, both heating and cooling?
Yes, they can be, you just get a basically a residential grade. Your point about it's not much bigger than a bedroom is exactly right. Two of the units would more than take the edge off the the whether it's overheating or if you brought in a similar unit for for heating, they can be hidden off season when they're not needed within the cabinetry. The, you know, there's a lot of under storage area in the cabinets that they can be stowed away and not be seen at all for some parts of the year. As far as ventilation or the 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 little R two D two looking thing on the left, there's a there's a a duct that goes about this big around that that could get cord through the panel discreet, granted tend not to want to disrupt any of their historic fabric as possible, but it's it's sort of a reversible condition. It's a simple core out and and you have a a short little duct just going directly out. So you just park it right where it needs to be fairly innocuous, out of the way. They're not very large. They're, you know, they're only about so big and, you know, just.
So the mic, the the heating system can go in the center, but the cooling has to go toward the outside.
But I really dislike, I I don't see how that can be because I have in my bedroom, which is about the size of this thing, just a regular plug-in-the-wall heating unit. And there's also the equivalent on a cooling unit. You can get them at Target and you just plug it in. And I, the thing I really have a problem with is any sort of duct going out any window. And if we absolutely were stuck doing that, I would want to go underground with it somehow. Because having a duck going out this window is, that's really awful. I mean, I I can't imagine that.
I would not, what what's what you're seeing in the presentation is not what I would do. That 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 can be done, but I wouldn't do that. There's, if you look at the unit itself, on the right side down low, that's where the 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 duct attaches to the unit. And a very short pipe that goes directly through the wall at that location would be in the panel zone and would be very discreet. So you know, I wouldn't propose having a what looks like a dryer vent duct wrapping around.
I I don't see why we need this when you can get cooling units that you plug in the wall that are freestanding, even like just bands with the cooling units, and we could get a space heater if we need, we could get two. And then we don't have to have any interruptions that we're not disrupting the walls, we're not having ducks, which is having it come out through vents in the cabinet.
Well, that's what I'd like.
Hold on, we've got three people talking.
Sorry.
One at a time. Do you want to say something, Bill?
No, that's okay. No problem.
Elizabeth?
Diana, I really like your idea about the smaller units. I believe that it could work and I don't think that our climate is so inclement that it would be uncomfortable, really without any in, you know, conditioning for most of the year. And I do not want to see a whole board through either a window or the floor panel, not the the side panels for a return air duct to go outside. I just think that I that I don't want to see.
Let me say something about that. What what I'm not comfortable with if we're talking about a portable heating unit and separate portable cooling unit is somebody has to move that. I mean, it's gonna be in the area. Somebody would have to move it, so it takes humans to manage it. And wait a minute, and somebody would have to decide when to turn it on and when to turn it off, rather than it being governed by a thermostat. I think.
It can be.
Hold on, let me finish, please. I think that that room is not going to be managed by a person. I mean, maybe somebody, maybe maybe our receptionist will go in there to lock it and unlock it. But I don't think anybody's going over there to monitor the heating and cooling on a daily period and or or take responsibility for moving a uh, heating unit and separate cooling unit. So I I I want to minimize the maintenance issues for this facility. To me, that's the most important thing is to make it so it's very easy for people to come in and go out and not have to be managed by somebody all the time.
No.
I told, through the mayor, I totally agree with what you're saying. I'm not proposing that we pull them out and push them back in. I'm suggesting that they are built in. They just, you're gonna have to have electric in there. But you just, they're built in and they can also be set on a thermostat. All of those things could be set to only turn on if it gets to sixty-five degrees or only turn on if it gets to seventy-eight or eighty-two or whatever we want to put. You can set them to turn on automatically and they'll be just plugged in all the time. And I'm saying that we have a ventilator panel, so it shoots right out. So we're not pulling it in and out. It's just built in there. It's just one of those smaller commercial ones that doesn't require venting.
Well, I think that if I could, just real quick, my understanding of especially on a cooling unit, you need to vent the condenser out, you know, out. So there has to be some sort of venting outside. It doesn't matter what you think we could do, but that's what you, that's what's required by the way that they work.
Not for the ones that we that I bought this summer. They have air, they, I don't know if they have water in them or what they do. But they, it's this freestanding, small AC cube. It's not gonna do a big room, but it will do a bedroom. And it's a freeze, it's, you know, it's about this big and it's freestanding. You just plug it in. You don't vent it out. That's the newest generation of air cooling. So it's a space.
Do you have to empty out? Do you have to empty out the?
You don't do anything.
Condenser unit that's in there, a reservoir that picks up the water?
No, you just plug it in. I've never had it. I have to admit, I haven't had it running for years on end, day and night. We used it only when it was really hot. But it has a thermostat that kicks on. It's about this big. It's like the new generation of room cooler, I think it's called. I could try to call it up on the internet, but anyway, they they exist. It's not the, it's not the big wall unit like you're thinking with the condenser.
We can certainly look into that, but I I do have a concern about putting a space heater in a cabinet in an unoccupied building on a thermostat that comes on and off all the time by itself. When nobody's monitoring, that's sort of a situation.
Do you need more feedback on this?
No, very helpful. Just one other notice is that the HVAC was a the more elaborate HVAC was a an additional expense that may not be necessary. That was one of the price control methodologies. So the more elaborate system is probably not going to occur based on, unless you, you know, are increasing the overall project costs at this point from the budgeting that's been, that's happened.
I was gonna say, if the councilor wants to forward the model information on the units that she's talking about, we're happy to look at those. You know, we've looked at a variety of different types of of systems, but we're trying to figure out what can either A be automated or B during certain periods of time, let's say, like, for example, when like the historical room has hours of operation that those are the, if it had hours of operation, then you can have a manually controlled unit. But other than that, the other option is go with some sort of heating thing and not have any air conditioning and rely on natural ventilation by having the doors open when it gets too hot, but that requires somebody to do that. And so we are keenly aware of the aesthetic issues of all of these things, and that's why this is an item of conversation for the council.
One something, if we were so lucky that the we could do the commercial HVAC system, that actually would be the most discreet. If we can get the conditioning units off to the side and out of the way. So for us, one question is, should we leave them in the the construction documents and let them be bid and just to see what happens? So that Robert and I can probably discuss that.
But Diana is saying we don't need to deal with a condenser with this magic machine she has, so we need to get that information to evaluate it.
This is Minerva. I've been doing a lot of remodeling projects lately. So have you considered using a solar attic fan so that if it is hot, it will turn on automatically? And then you have the electric radiant floor heating because the system are getting very inexpensive these days. And you can put a wifi thermostat on there, so it will solve all the ducting issues if the condenser AC is not really required.
Just out of the interest of time, there's just a couple of quick things. One is the exterior board options. With regards to putting up on the structure that's out by the train station. The feedback that we received from the committee was to go with a metal framed option as opposed to recycled plastic. And I think we're leaning towards the wall mounted without the headerboard. And so if that works for you, it'll be that brown trim color similar to the rest of the building. And then the last item, Vice Mayor is concerned about budget. And we do have a variety of things that bring this up to the wall in terms of the budget that we have for the project. There are items that we have listed as at alternates, which we can either keep or or drop because they all take us you know, further above our existing budget. I think that HVAC number we're likely gonna drop down with regards to options unless you'd like us to bid the commercial unit. The door actuator is an alternate that allows for the push-button actuation of the doors on the town hall side in addition to the rear side. And so the recommendation would be to have that just to get the pricing, but if you don't want it, that's fine. We have it on, we have it on the one side, on the rear side, on the track side. Okay.
Is that priced for two or one?
It's one.
So that would actually be thirty, forty thousand dollars?
One is a have to. This is a question on the want to.
Well, that's another argument for having only one, one.
Benches or exterior benches for the site. And we can drop that out of the project and fund through some other means if desired. It's just additional seating in and around the station building. Right now, we have a lot of concrete and I don't know if you've noticed, like Caltrain drives their truck up and parks there. And so having something a fixed object there that will discourage that type of activity is something that we're interested in. Exterior benches. And so we have exterior benches desired on the town hall side, on either side of the doors. For example, you know, we have that historic look of having the benches outside. That is that in three oh seven? So these are just extra benches. These are just extra benches, so. And then, yeah, so if there's any other feedback that you want to give us as we take this and move forward.
The Caltrain sign that's currently there, which is the the original railroad station sign, so to speak, is in, it's it's bent, it needs some repair and some repainting, that sort of thing.
Or I would say the other option is to just have it removed. And then you don't have that old Caltrain sign.
Committee could spend some time on really making a budget for how this is gonna end up. Right now, you know, we have ninety-five thousand dollars into the design that we're looking at here, plus the three seventy-five or something a little bit lower. And then on top of that is the refurbishment. So I think we need to spend some time and understand that so we know what we need to do budget-wise, because I'm, you know, I I could imagine it could be another which already about a hundred thousand dollars over potentially. And so it could be two hundred thousand dollars over. And so I just would like to really understand. You know, I brought this up when we first started talking about that. And so, you know, I just would like to know, it it can't be an open thing. I mean, that's one of the things that we ran into on this project here. So let's try and make sure we have a budget. Thank you. Appreciate it. We got some more important stuff to go over now.
Thank you.
Question through the mayor?
I I'd support removing the monument sign and greatly reducing that cost. I don't think we need the actuator. Not sure exactly what the benches are, probably certain, look at what that proposal is. And clearly, the HVAC number is gonna be down.
Yeah.
Yes, when you were talking about the signs, some of, when you not, we can't hear you if you're not directly in the mic. So I'm not sure if you just said you were trying to do the train station sign down. And I wanted to ask about the historic Atherton train sign, the wooden one with the jagged edges. Is that reflected anywhere here in this budget? Because we need to, that was stolen.
That's included in the base.
That's where, so that's just, okay, so that's part of the building then?
Yes.
And then what will be the price, the current train sign? I would not take it down. I would add the word museum to it because we need to have more signage to identify what the building is. And if we take that down, it's we're better off keeping it as is and just saying Atherton Train Museum. And there's room for that now. So the only expense would be painting it. And then the other question I had was, what is the timing on this? We're coming up on the our hundredth year anniversary. Is it remotely on this planet possible to have this thing launched as our hundredth year celebration? Is this years we're talking about or what was the timeframe here?
Well, with the direction that we're getting from council today, we're looking at finishing off the package. getting ready for building permit and Caltrain submittal for review and approval, but we'll be coming back to you shortly, just to get authorization to put the project out to bid as soon as we can.
But do you think that 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 we could actually have something built enough to host our hundredth year anniversary at our new little mini history museum?
In September, I I think that that's a that's a great target for us to make sure that we're done by then.
Oh, we could do that. We could do that because then the reason I'm asking that is if that could happen, if that's remotely realistic, all the videos and stuff that we make to go inside there, we could also premiere them. So they could be the the history of Atherton could be premiered at our grand opening, which is the opening of this historic medium. So it all makes sense and we were going to lot budget for that anyway. So just an idea out there. But after this meeting today, I don't know what our consensus was on some of these things. So you feel you have, can someone summarize at the end what our consensus was on the decisions that we're making tonight?
Yeah, I can. We we'll do that. One final comment, though. The September date is just for making sure that the project is completed, the construction is completed. You've still got to outfit that inside of that facility with trains, historic memorabilia and things like that. We have no control over that. So.
I'm not talking about the cost. I'm talking about whatever the displays are going to be in the video content, etc. Who's going to do that?
That that's out of outside of the current scope.
I I I know that, but you're all talking about having a grand opening of this thing in September with the whole kit and caboodle. Somebody's got to start working on the on the content. Who's going to do that?
We put it out to bid for different vendors. It's a different kind of vendor that does that. So it would involve another RFP to museum designers.
So when are you going to do it?
And videographers. Well, that's the question I'm trying to understand. If there's if there's a window that we at any way in the world that we actually could have this thing for our hundredth year anniversary, we would have to start really quickly to do the video and to get the stuff assembled. But if we were to start at the beginning of the year in January, we could have it by September on the inside.
Was something. Sorry about that. Okay. And so we can move on to the more important topic. Which is to me more important.
I'll second that motion. Vice Mayor.
I'm in favor too.
I think we're moving to item number two.
Diane, go forth and conquer.
All right, item number two. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The town received the formal response letter from HCD on on Monday of this week, October thirty first. We are statutorily required to adopt and submit a compliant housing element by the January thirty one twenty twenty three deadline. HCD expects the town to incorporate their comments into our housing element for adoption and to submit that element and to submit an element that meets the statutory requirements. The purpose of today's item is to provide the public with the comments that the town received from HCD on its draft housing element. Those are provided on the town's website. Staff will provide a high level review of the significant policy issues in those comments this evening. It is apparent from the comments that there is still a long way to go before the town gets a housing element that can be certified by the state. At the end of the day, the town must have a certified housing element. In other words, we must have a housing element that complies with the state's requirements, whatever they may be, or whatever they may interpret it to be. A second part of today's item is to discuss a framework for further public outreach and engagement. Staff is seeking council guidance on what that will be or what that will look like. Staff suggests a couple of public meetings set up over December and January and the opportunity for some distributed neighborhood group meetings where staff and a council member are the invited speakers. The council can also discuss what the objective of those outreach meetings will be. Are they going to be solely focused on promoting the town's ADU program and policy objectives? Or will there also be an opportunity to discuss other solutions that we may need to do to meet the state mandates? Lastly, the town has a couple of options for meeting the January thirty one twenty twenty three deadline. The town could make minor modifications to its current draft housing element and resubmit that to the state, knowing that based on the state's initial review, the town's policies and programs to include the use of ADUs as the major compliance effort may not meet statutory requirements. Or the town could endeavor to make changes to the draft housing element in a manner and scope that we believe addresses the state's comments. The latter may not be completed in time for the January thirty first adoption and submission. So the town would then advise the state of our path and expectations, but not actually adopt the element by that deadline. There are risks to both options. There's also a third option of adoption of a housing element that includes updates, but an abbreviated version of SEQA. There is also a risk there as well, but that option puts the town across the finish line on January thirty first, and the city attorney can expand on that as the council desires. The council's role here is to provide some policy direction. There are real consequences written into the law should the town fail to meet its obligations. The question is, how real will they become an Atherton? If and or ever when and what level of exposure the council is willing to tolerate in that event? Staff can make recommendations and provide advice based on our expertise. We're not arguing a solution, one solution over another. The council's ultimately the policy board here that will make that direction. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to staff, Lisa Costa Sanders and Dan Elrod, who are here this evening online to make a brief staff presentation again on those high level policy issues that are in the letter. Following that, I'd suggest that the council walk through the outreach program and expectations as well as adoption and submission strategy. And during those discussions, staff is also present to answer any questions as well as provide any feedback or recommendations. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa Costa Sanders.
Good evening. So as you noted in the letter from HCD and from our preliminary conversation with them, there's a number of items included in that letter that require additional analysis. And so we feel that the consultant team can work to address those items. That includes additional analysis to address affirmatively furthering fair housing, including expanding our comparisons to include more regional outlook. Additional analysis for non governmental constraints, special needs households and governmental constraints. Additional analysis of SB nine sites. We also need to include more definitive timeline and action steps with specific timing for implementation of those items. Expand the discussion of the ADU program and include a monitoring program. There's several items in the comment letter that we feel we need council direction and additional community input on. And that includes direction on how to address the HCD comments relating to multifamily housing at the school sites and consideration of additional multifamily sites. We have, as indicated, Diana Elrod and Barbara Kouts here this evening with the consultant team. And we'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions. As indicated, we just got the letter laid on Monday. But happy to try to delve into any questions that you may have.
Okay, is that it for the presentation? Okay, Bob.
There's six people in this room that I think are at this moment. I won't be one soon, but are responsible for the well being of the town. And that responsibility includes having a general plan that's viable and approved, which requires a housing element that's approved. Staff and all of our consultants told us from day one that the plan we put together would not be approved by HCD. And if I were to succinctly describe the the response we got from HCD, it would be an F. So I guess my question is, am I the only one of the our council members and city manager that thinks there should be some consideration given to a a plan B? Rather than moving ahead with something that's going to fail again and exposing ourselves to who knows how much litigation expense? And just pushing this kicking this can down the road. So I'd like to hear what the rest of you think.
Well, I'll go first. Well, Bob, thank you. Thank you for your comments. I do have my mic on. One of the things that we've asked the city staff to do right now is to help us start to justify some of the things that we've put together with the ADUs and reaching out to the community on ADU. So I think that the answer isn't as clear as yes or no. I think that there's more work we can do with the schools and I think, you know, there are some citizens groups that are are already discussing with some people that are discussing with at least the college on ways that they can improve things. There there might be a need for more flexibility, you know, at the school levels for what they can do and but still staying within our our groups. I think that you have several people suggest it fourplexes. Well, if you do an SB nine split and you build a house in an AJDU or a house in an ADU, you essentially have a fourplex on a on a on an environment where there was only one today or potentially only one today. I don't think we're in as bad a shape as perhaps an F. I think there's some refinement that we can do and some things we can go back and look at again and reconsider, but I think a lot of the discussion in here was, well, they want it more detail. They want it more analysis. They wanted us to expand some of the things. If you go back to page number ten and eleven where they have all those bullet points, they want us to expand. Well, okay, how are you going to do this? When are you going to do that? What's it going to look like? Those type of questions. And I think that we need to answer those questions. You know, a lot of what they want is for us to be able to dictate to people that no, you can't sell your house to this or you sell your property to that person. And and honestly, we we have no right to do that. And and we have no right as, you know, to dictate who buys or who rents somebody's house or ADU. I understand their concern that it could be deemed to be exclusionary because if you have an ADU, you don't necessarily you have the right to say who's going to live there and who's not going to live there. I get that. Okay. And and they don't want to have that that way. I do appreciate, you know, some of their their comments with regards to, you know, if you get more density in certain areas at a certain level, they will give us credit for low income, you know, whether actually it gets built there or not. But I do think that I thought that is this parts of this letter, as I read it, were I thought were a tad bit overly harsh. If you read them for what they say, maybe not what they were implied. And you know, it could be and some of parts of it are are essentially an overreach on their part. And, you know, I'd like to hear from Lisa and staff with regards to, you know, maybe go go through some of those areas that are there that are an overreach and maybe some of these government codes apply and some of these government codes don't. I'd like to see that analysis by you know, by our attorney and and with the input from staff. But I don't think we're C. I think that you know, we made some changes at the last minute, and so the documentation perhaps didn't have all the refinement in there that they were hoping to. And now we'll have the opportunity to do that. I think we need to have more opportunities to hear from the community. We heard for some today. And and I appreciate that. But you know, I don't think I think maybe we're C minus, but I don't think we're an F personally, Bob.
He was D minus?
Yeah. That was just my comment.
So process wise, I think what I'll do for this is let everybody each member of the council ask questions or make a comment, and then we'll take public comment. Because the issue is extremely complex. It's probably hard to separate questions and comments. I'll I'll give my comment. I I was actually very pleasantly surprised by the content in the letter that we got from HCD. I I I think that Bob is right that it's extremely harsh. But where it's particularly harsh is in our lack of analysis. They are very, very clear about a whole lot of areas where we lacked the now where we have lacked analysis and and a big deal, big part of that, I think, is what Lisa commented on about needing to root our analysis in a more regional analysis. I think we had depended on twenty one elements for some of our analysis and other local communities in Samatail County have done the same and have gotten the same comments. So I think we're we're greatly lacking in analysis. But when I go through it and I look at some of the comments that they've made, my my comments are things like we could do this and this should be analyzed and for example, they they had a fairly harsh comment about addressing exclusionary zoning. And that and and how do we deal with that? And how do we deal with single family housing, which is we we basically have single family housing and PFS, public school housing or not public, but school housing in Atherton. That's all we have. We have a little bit of publicly owned property. We have the park and we have this facility and that's it. So it we don't have the variety that a lot of communities have. And yes, they're okay. So there's some exclusionary zoning in that, and that's a barrier to affordable housing. So how do we deal with that? That's exactly what we need to deal with. And I think that's the heart of where our analysis has been. Our analysis has said, given the community that we have and the price of property in this community, there's only two ways that we can get to affordable housing. And that's either to enabling people to build ADUs on their properties, which is one hundred percent. Yes, in my backyard. And enabling public school facilities to build denser housing to meet the needs, the really critical needs of their staff. And we should do that. And and I think that where the real lack is is in in the analysis. And and I think what Bill said about how we change at the end and that created some you know, not going into as deep analysis we could is probably right. But we can do that, and I think we should do that. I think we need to explain to them why it is that we can't generate affordable housing by just increasing the density. And it it it's very obvious where you can't just because you increase the density doesn't mean you're going to have affordable housing. I think if you don't have to buy land, you can have affordable housing. We need to look at the opportunities for where we can make that happen. So I don't feel as negative from a policy perspective about the comments that they've given us. I think there's a lot of work to do in giving the analysis and I have you know, fifteen focused questions that come out of this because there's things that they've identified that I don't understand. I just don't think we have the time to go through those questions now. But this this is going to take a lot of work. And I know that that staff has said that there are there are some of the positions that they've taken that are overreaching and and I don't know which those are. I'd like to understand that. I I I don't know which those are because I don't fully understand exactly what California law enables HCD to do in terms of what they require of us. And I I think that the the requirements that are throughout this about needing to do analysis of what our housing needs in this community are and how we can achieve those needs are those are good. I think we can address that. It's just going to take time. And it's going to take understanding every every word that we put together that we send back to them. And I don't know which method we do between your A, B, and C, George. But I get very concerned if we're not going to respond to them because I I I want to be able to respond to them. It's going to take a lot of work to put that together. I want to be able to respond to them. It's going to take a lot of work to put that together.
Yeah, I agree. If, if we got more information, I think we should update. I, I do think we should update our, our report when we send it back. We, we should not just send the same thing back and say, well, we haven't had a chance to do sequel analysis, so we're not going to, we're sending you the same thing we sent you already that you already made your comments on. And that would be, I think that'd be inflammatory.
I, I don't think that's what we're proposing. And perhaps on that point, the city attorney and staff can elucidate a little more on what those three options might be.
Diana, you want to go next?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We talked tonight all about the analysis requirements, which were significant. And I have a lot of sympathy for someone who has to find those local statistics because I don't even know how you'd go about it. But I think the one line to me that stood out is that we proposed a proposal based primarily on ADUs. And I want to ask a question. So in there, we said, correct me on my numbers, that we were going to do 35 ADUs a year and they said that they gave us the number back of 19. If we, we can argue, and I think we can successfully and reasonably argue that we can come up with a not number higher than 19 based on the changes and the new policies we're putting in place. So to me, we need to figure out where that number is. What's the reasonable number? We can push back. If they're saying 19 and someone can help, I'd like to, my question is, what is the math? If we went with their 19 and that, we take that number out of our ADUs, how, what is the missing units? How many units do we have to make up? And then in our unit, we're making those up. If we're doing it at 35, we're making those up with the things that are on the school, the thing at Bear Gulch. So that's how we're making those up. And that's how we propose things with no overlays and no, you know, other of the projects. So what are the numbers? Can someone summarize for us? What, what we would have to make up if we did what they said? So they came back to us saying 19. We said 35. They said 19. At 19, how many additional units do we have to produce? 128 more than what we have right now. So, and so I would like to hear everyone's opinion of what that reasonable number might be that we're going to come back with. If we're saying 35, they're saying 19. We have a lot of grounds to argue a higher number than 19. So what do we think is our reasonable number to come back with? So that would be number one in my thought process. And the second is when we look at what that number produces. So if we say that number is, let's say, we say, all right, 25, not 35, and we give all the reasons why it's 25. Now, how many units do we have to make up and how can we approach getting those units? The other thought I had on this was that they gave a bunch of requirements for senior housing, handicap housing, all these other things, which I know we have programs for. If we were to go ahead and do one of the proposed projects in the mix, the ones that are on public owned properties, there's the Gilroy House, there's the train, the, near the train station there, the, uh, the courtyard. If we were to do a small focused unit that hit all of those boxes on our property, can we do, is that big enough property to get around having to make any sort of multi, you know, multi-family overlays? So that was two questions. Sorry, it's too long questions.
That number 128 is not right, Bill.
Eight times 19?
192, sorry. I must have had an addition error. Thanks. I know.
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I have three questions and then I have comments. Um, I guess my first question is, how are we doing with our ADU inventory analysis? We were going to do a very detailed, um, survey of existing permitted ADUs and other ADUs, uh, that could be turned in, you know, like pool houses and things that are not ADUs that could be turned into. And, uh, we did the survey. So that's a, that's a, I think a very important question that needs to be answered for this. And have there been any lawsuits brought against, uh, the state by any other jurisdiction, any other coalition so far in California that we know of? And what's their premises for doing that? And has the state taken any proactive punitive action, legal action against any city in the state that has not, um, achieved an approved plan? So I think those are very, um, important questions to answer. I highlighted the ADU paragraph that Councilmember Hawkins from Wallion brought up and it's on page six of our letter. And they do admit that we projected 35 ADUs. The trend is inconsistent with HCD records of 19 ADUs per year. And they said to support assumption for ADUs in the planning period, the element should reduce the number of ADUs that have been assumed per year and reconcile trends with HCD records, including additional information such as more recent permitted units and inquiries, resources and incentives and other relevant factors. Uh, and then, uh, these are things that we are planning on doing, which I think is very heartening. Programs should commit to additional incentives and strategies and, uh, monitoring of the ADUs. So I think that's really important that we need to, um, address. Uh, I have to tell you, after reading our 16 pages and comparing it to Woodside's, 25 pages, 16 pages. It's almost word for word. It's almost word for word. It tracks paragraph by paragraph, what they sent to Woodside to what they sent to us with a little bit, you know, they talked about Kinyarah in there. So, um, it's like this is almost a form letter that they've sent back which they sent back to Woodside and probably Portola Valley, pretty much the same. I, um, think it will be a stretch to, uh, get an approved plan with our ADUs and without a real firm, uh, commitment and plan for a multi-family, uh, housing unit on Menlo College that is believable, that will be able to be, um, developed within the next eight years, uh, with a significant number of units uh, for low and moderate income. Um, we will not be successful in our recent model. So that's, uh, that's why I'm wondering about all the other cities in the state that have not had a, an approved plan, whether there's been legal action taken against them.
Good one, staff, to go through a couple of those things. So Lisa, I'll take the ones I can address and then between you and Mona and Diana and Barbara can address the others. So with respect to our conversation with HCD on our numbers, as they've mentioned early on, they're going off an average from 2018 to 2021, based on our annual reports of ADUs that were permitted. We think there's errors in that report, uh, in terms of their numbers, and they've said that we could submit corrections to their record that might take that number, that average up a little higher. And if we can provide justification to them that our 2022 numbers are even better, uh, they will suggest they go from 2019 to 2022 and use that as the trend. And that'll get us higher. It won't get us to 35, but it'll get us higher. Uh, and I think that's a reasonable expectation for us to move forward with. How much higher? If I had to guess, I'd, I'd put it around 25 or so, uh, but that's just a guess. Then in terms of the analysis that we're doing behind the scenes of our building permit records and historical records, we're still going through those microfiche, separating those out into groups, trying to figure out which home fits into which group, whether they've got an accessory building that they never remodeled or never added improvements to, whether they did remodel it into an ADU, whether it is an ADU or a R E, whether we've counted it, it's several lists we're going to put together. That's going to be accomplished sometime in early December is our expectation for that. And we'll use that as part of our background analysis when we respond to HCD on this, uh, draft set of comments. The inventory analysis lawsuits, punitive action, that one will be probably the city attorney and some of our other consultant staff. Uh, and then Lisa, if you have any of the other questions.
I just want to clarify that, um, with the additional analysis, especially on the affirmatively furthering fair housing, it's not just about putting additional data in, which we'll be able to find and put in. But then it's about, their, their comment is, what measures are you going to take to address the disparities? So what is Atherton going to do to address the issues that we do not have low income housing? We do not have the same, you know, racial complex that other communities have. So what measures are we going to take to address that? So I think that's a big, big item in the letter that, um, we need to consider. As well as all new sites that we're looking at need to address how we are affirmatively furthering fair housing. And so how are those going to be, you know, open to the public and available at different income categories? And then I think no matter where we get to with our ADU number, HCD wants to see additional multifamily. And we, we received comments, um, that they need to see that by right. So the concern is if it requires a conditional use permit, that the community could oppose that, it could be denied. Um, so it needs to be, you know, areas that are by right. And as you know, we cannot have design review on those either. It needs to be objective design standards. I'd be happy to turn it over to Diana if there were other questions as well as Barbara and Mona. Aspects.
Yeah, so I know that we've used a lot of census data, you know, for the racial profiling and, and for the, uh, uh, income levels and things like that. But what isn't included is for nine months or longer out of the year, there are, there is a very diverse population over at Menlo College that they're counted at their home base and not counted here. So I would think that it would behoove us to at least contact the college and find out what that information is and see where we can make adjustments, which would improve the numbers at least to start with because it is a very diverse, uh, uh, population over there. Uh, and, and definitely other than the faculty and staff that is living on campus, we don't get credit for.
So just following that concept up about student, uh, population. We have the Selby Lane School, we have Menlo Atherton High School, and they have very diverse, uh, populations, but
Yeah, but they don't live there. The student base lives.
Residents.
Oh, okay. The, their residents. Got it. And those, yeah.
Yeah, and many of them live here round, year round.
Like, like a thousand of them, 500 of them?
There's probably, there's 800 students right now.
Right, perhaps we let Steph, uh, the city attorney perhaps finish on, on the other legal comments.
Yes, um, I can speak to the issue of legal challenges. Um, but before I do, I think it's really important to acknowledge some of the frustration that the community and decision makers are feeling with respect to this sixth cycle. Um, this is being felt across many communities within the state. Um, and it does feel like there's a whole lot of regulations being jammed down your throat. Um, and the reason for that in part is because we have a lot more legislation that has been effective in this cycle that was not effective when we were reviewing the housing element last time. Um, and the, uh, Housing and Community Development Department and Attorney General's Office have been financially incentivized and have just a lot more ability to enforce some of their provisions. So what we're seeing right now is, or what I'm seeing anyways, is what I describe a little bit of a chaotic litigation because everyone is suing everyone. YMB, which is yes, in my backyard, has sued HCD on the grounds that there's not enough housing, uh, and they think that there should be, the RENA number should be increased even more. And then we have communities, particularly in Southern California, Coronado, San Diego area, um, suing HCD on the grounds that the RENA numbers were not properly calculated. Um, the courts have responded to that. Um, just this year, there was a decision, City of Coronado versus San Diego, um, Association of Governments, saying that California courts do not have jurisdiction to adjudicate claims involving objections to regional housing needs assessments. We're seeing an increase of, um, court decisions backing up and giving deference to HCD's interpretation of housing element laws, um, because they're the regulatory agency. We're also seeing that the Attorney General's Office in HCD are joining in lawsuits against public agencies, mostly cities, um, who are failing to approve projects that might be high density or that, um, uh, have not, um, moved forward with their housing element. So there's ample amount of litigation. But unfortunately, there's nothing promising that I can tell you that would relieve or um, lessen the burden with respect to our obligations to implement some of the goals and objectives that have been set forth. Um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Barbara and Diane to, um, contribute any comments.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Barbara Kouts. I'm a partner at Gulf Farm Litman and we, pretty much have been focusing my practice recently on the housing laws. And I just wanted to emphasize some of the things that are in the HCD letter that I think will make it very problematic to continue to rely on an ADU strategy. First of all, the way the statute is drafted, HCD has pretty much the sole authority to decide to what extent you can utilize ADUs to, to resolve your housing, you know, to satisfy some of your housing needs. Besides the issue about how many ADUs can be counted, there is the issue of whether they can be counted as lower income households. One of the, they have a comment as serving lower income households. They say the element must also address affordability assumptions for ADU projections. And so right now, the, the city, the town is saying that 60% of the unit, of the ADUs constructed will be affordable to lower income households. And I doubt that they will in the end, accept that without, say, additional surveys by the town. Another issue has to do with SB nine units. The element as it's drafted projects that lot splits, uh, under SB nine will create 96 units. What the, what the letter says is that the city needs to identify specifically which sites will be, will be developed or are designated to be developed for SB nine units and provide evidence that the owners and, that the owners are interested in creating those units. 96 units is a lot of units that this, that the town has projected so far. By the way, this is like their standard, their standard comment on SB nine units. They basically are very suspicious, you might say, of anybody claim, of any community claiming a significant number of SB nine units. I mean, right now, your total RENA is 348 units. Yeah, I know. I am just saying, what they will demand is that you identify exactly where those units are going to go. And lastly, I agree with comments that several council members made that they will not accept this without, without multi-family zoning at 20 units an acre. Because I do not believe that there, that the town would have evidence that lower income housing can be created at lower densities than that. And evidence that those units will likely, um, that the sites are actually adequate and likely to be built. Now, they could be built in the school sites, but you don't really, you only, you're only projecting 24 units on those school sites. And the town's total lower income RENA is 148 units. And I, I just don't see how you get to 148 units without doing some additional upzoning or, or have evidence that the schools are going to, are going to develop much more lower income housing. Let's see, in terms of, I think, I think your city attorney gave an excellent um, summary of the litigation, what's been happening with litigation recently, which is that the cases have pretty much all been going against cities. We've seen courts even, um, even make, uh, you know, even adopt opinions about density bonuses that, you know, that are damaging to cities without the issue even being briefed by any of the parties. And I think, I think, um, you know, so far the cities have, the cities and the counties are really portrayed in the press and by, and in the courts as the bad guys in this process. And we could argue about, you know, whether some of the things in the HCD letter are overreach. I mean, I probably share your frustrations when I read these letters. But it kind of doesn't go anywhere. And so our usual advice to clients is to do your best to try to get a, a certified and approved housing element. Because if the courts take it over, the results will be much worse than you could, than you could, uh, than the solution you could craft yourselves. I don't think I have anything else to add.
I'm just gonna, I'm Diana Elrod. I'm a housing consultant. I do a lot of the housing elements. Uh, have been doing so for more than twenty years. And um, your letter of sixteen pages is about um, average length. And this is probably, by saying that, that's like eight times as long as they used to be. And I want to, in particular, I think everything has been covered and I don't need to respond to anything. But the issue on page five where it talks about zoning for lower income households, it is direct in saying the element must demonstrate zoning appropriate to accommodate housing for lower income households. That's not ADUs for lower income households, that's zoning. In other words, the, the town must have zoning of at least of twenty units to the acre to comply with the requirement for having multifamily housing. Um, and how that's accommodated is also going to be of, you know, where it's located is going to be of great interest to the state, um, because of the overlay and the lens of affirmatively furthering fair housing. If it turns out that the folks that uh, are, let's say, on, on a school site, for example, maybe they're, do they represent the, the demographic population of the county as a whole? Ie, the, the, they're, in terms of um, race and ethnicity. If the, if that is the case, then that would pass muster. But if the, if the population, it does not address, it does not reflect the community as a whole, then unfortunately, the state will have things to, will, will perhaps come down even further and require more work done. I think it's great to have identified sites via schools, but I, I, based on some of the language in this letter and some of the language I've seen elsewhere, I'd be very careful about ensuring that there is specifically land that is zoned in places that will respond to AFFH concerns.
Diana, just, just to be uh, clear, that paragraph you referenced to zoning for lower income households, twenty units per acre is not required. Twenty units per acre is the default where we don't have to do any more analysis. And HCD says, okay, that's considered to be affordable. You don't need to do the feasibility analysis. But if we didn't do it at twenty units per acre, then we've got to show a feasibility analysis, how it's going to pencil, whether it's feasible, what our experience is in dealing with that, and how it meets the state guidance.
That last sentence in that paragraph is, I, is, needs to be explained to me because I see that there's a little wiggle room, because if it's not financially feasible with an experience within the zone, then you just can't do it.
That's correct, it won't count.
This has generally been interpreted though is unless you have it at twenty units to the acre, you can say, we don't, we don't need to go that high. Then you have to prove that you can develop and you have had development at less than twenty units per acre for lower income households. That is how it has been, how, how it has been interpreted. Yes, um, they, they're including but not limited to financial feasibility and experience, which means the and here is important. Does a jurisdiction have experience developing lower income housing at, at less than twenty units per acre? I believe the answer probably will be no. I may be wrong, but I, my, my belief is unless the town can prove that it can develop it, housing for affordable, affordable units for at less than twenty units to the acre, that would be also rejected by the state.
I might say that I had a client that attempted to convince HCD that there, there were a larger city, that it, that a density of twenty-five units per acre was acceptable rather than thirty units per acre. There had been a lot of projects done in adjacent cities at twenty-five units per acre, and HCD would not accept it unless there had been an example of a project in that city, as Diana is saying. Uh, as it says, experience within the zone. So you'd have to show that you had, say, a site zoned at fifteen units per acre and had, and had built an affordable project there, and that you don't have that kind of evidence.
No, we don't. Because they won't count our dormitory at the college.
Yeah.
No.
Dormitories are not considered housing because they-
Yes, we understand that, we understand that, but at one time that they were considered that. The other thing is having a college, two colleges actually in the proximity, one including in our town. I think that the, the low income housing for ADUs, and I realize we're not arguing amongst ourselves, but I just, to make it clear, I think we have a high probability that we can probably put people of, of all diversities at low income in ADUs, because that's the type of housing that they need. There's not enough housing here for the graduate students at Stanford, some of the athletes, as well as the, the, uh, the students at Menlo College. Even though they just built a brand new dorm, they're still short. They're short several hundred students, several hundred beds.
I have, I have a-
Uh, wait, Mona was going to comment on the issue of the next steps. Or Steph laid out three options.
Okay. Right, the submission, submission option.
Diana has her hand up.
Would you like me to respond or have Councilmember Hawkins Manuelian comment first?
Uh, why don't we have her comment first, then you respond, and then we'll take public comment. You want to say something, Diana? Should we let Mona go?
You're muted.
She can't, she can't unmute herself, Anthony. If I could read lips.
Can you hear me now? Sorry, I, I didn't mean to interrupt. I want to hear Mona's answer. I was actually going to ask a different question, which was a hypothetical. If we were to take some land that the city owned, uh, let's say hypothetically, we took something like the Gilroy and we zoned it at uh, twenty-two units for that acre. It's not a full acre, it's under an acre, but we did it at that number. And we made that for seniors or teachers or, or, uh, workers. And we did something like that, and we did it jointly with an existing um, low income housing developer. Would that be a way to get one small unit that comp, that hits all of the different things? And we don't have to go to overlays? So I think none of us, we're trying to find a way to not go to overlays and still get through this. So could we do one targeted thing, I guess I'm trying to ask?
I think it would need to be a large enough site to accommodate the number of units that we need to show. And um, I think based on some math we were just talking about, we need to show for a hundred and forty-eight lower income units. Um, so we may be able to achieve a few of those from the ADUs, but not as many as we had planned. And then based on this hypothetical site you were mentioning, let's just say it was an acre, you would get twenty-two units you could count as lower income. So we may need to find a larger site or a couple other sites that are similar to that.
And then, and then just to add, like for the college, if the college would do an eighty unit, um, student housing and faculty only, would that work? And that doesn't get us all the way out. The other thing that I was going to say is that I have heard from people, like, um, friend of mine whose mother is elderly and has lived in Atherton her whole life. She has an ADU that her housekeeper stays in, and she doesn't charge her rent at all, but the woman is there twenty-four seven in case she gets, um, you know, and needs her. And then there's uh, her neighbor who does the same thing. And I'm wondering how many situations we do have like that in and around Atherton that's just not, we don't know about.
Right, we can, we can do that outreach to try and find those, and that would help with our annual reporting. So, you know, but we still have to comply with the zoning requirements to say that we'll hypothetically meet that three hundred and forty-eight number. If we actually end up meeting it on our annual reports through ADUs or through some other mechanism, we're compliant. But if we don't, then HCD is going to come back and say you need to do something more on your programs. You want to move to the city attorney?
I, I think that's a yes, I couldn't hear, but I, I'm going to address some of the options that we have today. And I'm really going to limit the options based on some of the discussions that I've heard from the council. I think that essentially we're talking about um, informing H- let me back up here. So we have until January thirty-first um, to uh, update our housing element adopted and submit it to HCD. So we can either inform HCD of our endeavors on some of the revisions in response to their sixteen-page letter and leave it at that and wait for a response. Or we can attempt now, based on direction that we receive from the council, to actively make those changes with the intent of adopting a revised housing element by that date um, and submitting it to HCD. From a CEQA perspective, I think that we have a defensible argument filing a notice of exemption uh, with the revised uh, housing element document. And the basis for that would be that the housing element that we're adopting, even if it has new programs that in, that for example includes uh, multifamily where we didn't have it before, is still really a um, planning document. And the actual implementation will not occur until we bring back the zoning code amendments to effectuate that. And it's at those zoning code amendments that we would conduct the uh, environmental analysis. So again, what you're really going to hopefully provide direction on is, do you want to just inform HCD that we're working on it? And we will provide those updates when they're available? Or um, work quickly to implement those changes and provide a revised and updated housing element by the January deadline?
In, including doing the zoning amendments that we submit with them?
Including them within the, the housing element document, but not actually rezoning at this point in time.
And they would believe that we would actually-
We can no longer say consider, we have to actually say we will.
It's six o'clock. We're obviously going past six o'clock. I want to open it up to public comment now. Then I'll bring it back to the council. Sir, any public comment?
You know, I still uh, question the number that we start with, the number of units. And I don't know that uh, I just think that somebody needs to take a hard look at those numbers, because I still don't believe them, that we justify three hundred and forty-eight units. And nobody has gone up and raised hell with whoever calculated them and figured out where in heck they're getting it, those high numbers compared to what they were eight years ago. And I just, uh, I mean, we lost a set, a congressman in California means we lost about a million people. So how could, how could we have increases of this magnitude when the overall shift in California is down, not up? So that's one of my concerns. And then they, the other thing is where are these low income people going to come from? Or, I mean, is this, is this a reallocation of people? Or is this, are we just trying to do more in what we have? Because we, the college students, I mean, they aren't family income, they're individuals. So I don't know that they're going to count in the low income category. But I, and your experts up on the screen would probably have the answer, but I just, I, I just think it's going to be difficult to use college students to, to support low income housing if, if it's a single person, based on the, because the definition is low income families of four. And the one-third in, the, the calculation is the lower third of uh, family income average for the county. So I think it's a little under a hundred thousand for low income, but that's a family of four, not one person. So I just don't know where we're going, coming up with a, how we're going to satisfy this by using the college students or the housekeepers to meet the need, what, what they're requiring. And I just think it's uh, and I don't understand why, has any other place in the state, have they congr, have they used counties or have they got two or three cities together where the the geography is open to, to uh, I mean, if you got one town, a city that's all commercial and another town that's gotten all residential, I mean, you can't use the same standard for both. It seems to me you've got to recognize that the two of them should be working together to do it. But you know, I, I don't have the answers, but I've got the questions. And I just think we need to keep the multi, keep away from the multifamily or we're going to change the complete character of Atherton, and I'm against that a hundred percent.
Okay, David Arada. Yes, we can hear you now, David.
Oh, oh, I, I, I'm kind of confused because you, you mentioned that if, if you had twenty units per acre, that it would be kind of like automatic? It would go through automatically? That's what I thought I heard. I, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm confused.
The HCD letter says if it's twenty, i- if we were to zone for twenty units or more an acre, it wouldn't require additional analysis.
Oh, okay, but uh, you'd still have to zone for that. Yeah, okay, I thought it would be automatic if we changed from twenty-six units to twenty an acre. Anyway, we're still here, we're still ready, and we're ready to go whenever you're ready. So uh, we'll hang in there for a little while longer, but it's been almost two years now, so good luck. Thank you for your, let me comment.
No problem, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, I don't see any other public comment at this time, so I'll bring it back to additional comments from the council. Well, I'll, I'll say a couple of things. I think we need to plan a session where we, I mean, this is a lot of material. And obviously, the analysis is very complex. And Lisa said, well, it's not just analysis, it's measures, right? But it, it's something like eighty-five percent analysis. And the measures are important. We need, we need to take these subject areas. We, and I think we need to plan either at a study session or a council meeting to take these subject areas and go through them and make some decisions. One, one of the comments that the HCD letter says is that uh, we, we had phrased uh, the possible changes as possible changes or considerations rather than af- affirmative changes. Uh, so I think we need, and, and I think that's a fair comment. I think we need to go through these areas and decide what we're going to do differently. And the two big areas are obviously uh, school, housing, and single-family residence housing. What are we going to do differently? And I suppose, in fairness, we should also look at the public land. That really means the park. Uh, and if we're gonna, if we're, if we're going, I mean, do we want to change the park into a housing unit? Uh, and just put apartment buildings and uh, do away with the park? I don't think that that's something that Atherton residents are going to support, but maybe that's something that we should actively consider and put in front of HCD as the reasoning why we are or aren't going to do it. and put in front of HCD as the reasoning why we are or aren't going to do it. Those are the three areas of land we have in Atherton. To me, there, there's, there's a question that this paragraph that several people have cited titled zoning for lower-income households, where it references the twenty units per acre doesn't require additional analysis. That the issue is if you can't create affordable housing in Atherton because of the cost of land and the limited amount of housing that might be developed for affordable housing, you know, but is limited because it requires no transfer. Then if you can't do it, if it's impossible for Atherton to meet the requirement, that is probably an issue for some other communities too, where it's impossible to meet what they're defined as a requirement. And the way I see their requirement is they're saying you have to zone for twenty units an acre. Well, maybe that is not going to happen in Atherton. So if that doesn't happen, then you can't comply. I think, but before we get there, I think we have to go through the areas where we can comply and address like exactly what the regulatory changes are that we're going to make to incentivize and to enable our, our residents to build more ADUs and to address the issues in terms of zoning and regulations at the school sites. I do think on the ADUs, we changed our requirements, right, two years ago. There's a big difference between how many ADUs were built in eighteen and nineteen and how many were built in twenty and twenty-one. And it's because we decided that the square footage area of the ADUs beginning in twenty-twenty would no, would be exempt from the maximum square footage allowed in town. Well, of course, all of a sudden, there's more, almost three times as many ADUs being built. Well, that's something we need to articulate to HCD because their default of this average over four years, maybe the courts are going to say, it doesn't matter what you think. But there, we made some legal changes, and we made some regulatory changes, and those should get recognition. And, and well, I think we need to do, and, and we need to build a very robust program, exactly like they've said we need to build. I, I think we can and should build that. A bill, and then Diana.
Yeah, so many of these laws on the government, on this housing that are being cited here, many of them came into being during the pandemic. There were many small businesses that went out of town, out of business and left town. And, and so then there were laws that were saying, if you have unused commercial space, you should, you're obligated or it's high priority that you put that into residential because we need the residential space. Obviously, we don't have that. Also, during the pandemic, there was material shortages, shipping shortage, shipping issues, people not coming to work because they were locked down for et cetera, et cetera. And that also impacted the ADU development. So that's why I think really, and Hillsborough also pointed this out, that's one of the reasons why the numbers have grown over the last two years versus four-year period of time that they're, I think, inappropriately citing on. I think we need to finish, like we've said already, we need to finish our, our survey and go one step further to find out who's living in those facilities to the maximum extent possible and understand where there's people, like, for example, what Elizabeth brought up, that, that we may not even know about, okay? Those people, even though they're one person, it's a single-family home. So those things, you know, need to count. You know, we've all said several times, the cost of land is very expensive here, and you're not going to be able to have a developer, you know, buy or, you know, get in one acre lot and build twenty acres and still make it profitable or feasible for low in, very low income and low income and even moderate income people according to the, the area. So, so I think that, you know, that we have some work to do and we have some analysis and, and statements that we need to make. And I think that that's, it's prudent for us to, you know, to try and address their issues. But I think that, you know, we need to, you know, do as much as we can to move forward. I really feel that, you know, I'd like to understand, because I understood from the city manager when he and I spoke about this yesterday, that there was a number of these cited items that were inappropriate. And maybe in a, you know, in a separate mailing to us, I'd like to understand which ones of those staff feels and Mona feels that, you know, just need to be scratched out so we can really concentrate on really what the meat of the action is here. Well, I understand, but they're not ones that we're going to have to put a lot of effort into.
For example, I think we've always been required to provide for emergency shelters, and we've had that within our code somewhere already, they've mentioned it within this element. We'll just reference, hey, we've been doing this, this is where it is.
Yeah, that's, that's a very simple thing.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff like that, but we can set up a dedicated special meeting of the council, not a regular study session, not a regular council meeting, dedicated day. Sit down, really focus on the issues, go paragraph by paragraph of the big ones and get, and get specific feedback from the council. But use, I, I want to make sure that we're not just going to talk around the issues. We actually need to think through a solution and a way to look at it and an approach to give staff that feedback and direction in a, in a clear way.
Okay.
November eleventh, no, we do not, we haven't set any of the town hall meetings yet. That was one of the other expectations here, is we could set up a couple of town hall meetings, and those wouldn't be the working sessions, those would be.
Why don't you put a couple of dates out and we can.
We'll do that.
Yeah.
Diana's had her hand up.
Well, I was going to.
It's a holiday.
If I could, real quick, I appreciate that. And one of the things, since we're talking about town land, you know, when we were first looking at this, the city manager mentioned that perhaps there was space at the corpyard as we progressed and moved more and more things over to the, the park, corpyard. And so, you know, I'd like to know better what that timeline is in case we have to fall back on something like that. So that would be, you know, appropriate, a little assignment for George there. So appreciate it, thank you very much.
I agree with what everyone was saying in terms of pushing back on that nineteen ADU number and articulating all the arguments everyone said. I wanted to ask Lisa a question. You, you had mentioned by right, and did I read it correctly? That they were asking us directly to, in the case of the schools, because they don't have it by right to build those units? And they, did they directly ask us to make those by right? Is that one of the actions we can take that would be? I'm trying to figure out what are the things we could do that would, that are not painful for us or not that painful, that will get us closer?
They raised zoning concerns about the housing at the school. For example, is the hide okay? Are the setbacks too much? So they wanted us more analysis on that. And then also that the suggestion was it should be by right because of the concern of community opposition to the housing would actually never get built. So it would be viewed as a constraint.
One thing that we, that staff had asked us to address that we really haven't addressed is the outreach issue. And staff suggested that we have two community-wide meetings, I think, one in December and one in January. And that we have a series six or eight decentralized meetings where one council member would go to each of those meetings with staff. So they don't have to be Brown Act meetings. I think that is exactly what we should do. The, the HCD letter emphasizes the importance of community outreach and inclusion of the community in every aspect of this. This is a really big deal for us, we all know that. We had extremely good success with those decentralized townwide meetings when we took the master plan for the town center out, and we got all kinds of comments from the community, where at each of those meetings, there were twenty to forty people. They met in different people's houses, and I think we should do that. I think that's a good suggestion, I support it a hundred percent.
Okay, on that, then we'll, we'll send out a solicitation for a date for those two town hall meetings. And then I will ask for the town to be divided up into neighborhoods? How that would be divided up, and then each of you for a contact or two within that neighborhood that we could reach out to, to set something like that up.
That's all fine and good, but I don't think, we got work to do before we get up in front of citizens and look like a bunch of dummies.
Yeah, we'll schedule the special meeting sometime in November.
Is that we would have to all have the same playbook, you know, for each meeting, so we're all talking the same, at least presenting the same information, and then let residents talk back to us. It's like what we did with the Civic Center project.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Logistically, how are we going to, first of all, I love this idea, but logistically, how are we going to do it? And be, and still be inclusionary? So for example, are we, if, if you just say, all right, I'm going to do it in my area, am I mailing it just to my neighbors? ADAPT has zone-specific emails, so we can email all three hundred people in my neighborhood. Or are we going to publicly notice them or send them out like it's going to be in this neighborhood here? How are we going to get people? Because if we're just, if we're just reaching out to our immediate neighbors, we're going to miss a lot of people. So how do we practically do it in an inclusionary way?
So there's, there's two components of this. The, the town hall meetings are the town-wide, public engagement meetings, inclusionary, everybody's there. The purpose of the neighborhood meetings is more soliciting feedback of the Atherton community about potential solutions, ADU programs, how they can help, how they can help us meet our objectives in that. So it's not necessarily about, you know, getting the entirety of Atherton plus the surrounding community into somebody's neighborhood home. It's about finding someone of, of interest in the community that would be interested in hosting twenty or thirty people in their home to have a small group discussion with staff, ask the questions they want to ask, and get some feedback from staff and the council member that might be in attendance.
But how do you get those people, I'm trying to ask? So are you, if you pick a person, it's just going to be their network, that's not exactly fair. Because, you know, not everybody, or are we going to physically put it, I know, not in, but sticking them on mailboxes, invitations? I mean, how do we get the word out?
So can I just respond, Diana? When we did the outreach for the Civic Center project to kind of show everyone the first, like, storyboards and the concept, and, you know, actually, it worked really well because we had a lot of charrettes that everybody was invited to down here in the old town hall. I mean, the whole community and at Holger Palmer Park. So everybody got those kinds of invitations. But yeah, I mean, it really is kind of in your community. Like, I think I, there's a, there's a member of the public here tonight who would love to have a bunch of his friends come over and talk and have us present where we are and get solutions. And then you just do that. And, you know, there are people who had up to maybe fifty people come to their home, I think, over in Lindenwood there was. So it, everybody does, you know, become involved, who wants to be involved?
But how do they find out? I lived here in Atherton when you guys did that outreach. I probably would have went, I never heard about it, because I didn't happen to be friends with you or the person that you picked to have it. You see what I'm trying to say?
But you had been invited as a resident to the charrettes, to all the big town hall meetings, because we sent out all kinds.
But we're now talking about how do we get people to these small things if we don't target invite?
Diana, staff will figure out how to get the word out to everybody. Everybody's not going to come, ten percent of the people tops, because that's what happens.
Just trying to invite everyone, so it's inclusionary.
Staff will figure that out.
Yeah, that, that's not the responsibility of any individual council member, it won't be our contact list. It will be town figuring out how to target the specific areas. And probably they'll put down an announcement that'll include all the different meetings, and people who live near a meeting will go to that one.
Okay, that would be acceptable.
Okay.
We'll send out a calendar, we want to have it in November before Thanksgiving. Yep, that's two weeks away, at most. It's December and January. No dates been set yet. Anthony, stop the recording and turn the mics off.